I don't know how much money they take in. Say they take in 50,000.
Whenever I got out of the military.
And we can only give them five thousand. So whatever that ratio.
The first time I went to Oregon was quite the experience. I almost got in a fight with the person that was trying to tell me they were going to pump my gas for me.
No self-service gas.
Well, I didn't have very much money back then.
Or New Jersey, either one.
And I was like, no, that's fine. I thought they were trying to do very good. And so they finally identified themselves as an employee of the gas station and told me that it's illegal.
That's what they used to do.
Yeah, they changed now.
Let's call the meeting to order. This is the Bella Vista City Council Work Session for June 16, 2025. First item is review of the minutes. If you have anything you want to talk about, Travis, or you?
No, I think you got it fixed.
Okay. Anybody else on the minutes? Okay. We have the unfinished business. We don't have unfinished business. So new business, the first one is an ordinance, amending section 16-30 temporary portable storage containers. The code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to remove the requirement for a permit and for other purposes. Travis, I think this is your suggestion.
Yeah, I just, I kind of think that this is unfair and burdensome to the residents. It puts unnecessary stress on people that are just moving here. And I think welcoming people to Bella Vista with the demand to apply for a permit for their belongings is just not something that I support and that I think our constituents like to see. And also if they have portable storage containers for other purposes. A neighborhood or a house in the neighborhood where I have a rental property, they had a tree fall on their house and they didn't, I never saw a portable storage container there. However, if they chose to put their stuff in there while their house was getting fixed to salvage it and not let it get rained on, I wouldn't like to see them have to apply for a permit. You don't have to apply for a permit to put a U-Haul in your driveway. And I just don't feel like you should have to get a permit for these temporary storage containers. I also think and believe, and maybe if Director Robertson's here, she could attest to it, but there's ways that we can deal with residents if they become, if they keep them on their property too long or try to build a jungle gym out of them or whatever. There's land use laws that I think we could use to prevent that from happening. So that's pretty much my take on it and why I would like to do away with that.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sure Taylor will need to get up here anyway. Because that's, Taylor, if you've got a second. Because that's, I really don't understand what the sudden emotional tie to permitting. If somebody gets a pod or something in their driveway, how long do they have? How long, if they go through the permitting, is the permitting online?
Yeah, all of our permits you can apply from that.
So anybody who has access to a phone can apply for a free permit online?
The smartphone, I understand.
Okay. Well, I mean, so.
It's 30 days. You only get 30 days in a 12-month period in the residential zone, max.
Okay. So is there any circumstance, like say, natural disaster? Like if somebody's house burns down, they have a pod in their driveway, can they apply for?
Well, that's another one of the mayor and Jason question. If there's been a natural disaster, I believe the mayor can stop all permitting requirements for a certain amount.
Can they, okay, could you stop permitting for an individual who has a tree that falls across their house? And there's extenuating circumstances where, hey, well, it's going to take me six months to get something built or done or whatever?
What's the legal on that?
If the mayor declares a city state of emergency, he has the ability to suspend the application of certain city ordinances for a limited period of time. So I believe this would be one of those. So in terms of requiring permits, say, I mean, the typical example would be, say, a grading permit or some sort of building-related permit because there's been a massive tornado outbreak and we've had a bunch of the city that's been destroyed and, you know, we need to suspend some application of things that normally would take place so that we can get things taken care of. Now, in terms of just like one property, I don't think you could suspend it for one property.
Okay.
Because that wouldn't necessarily be a city declaration of emergency.
Well, that's why I'm asking. I didn't know if we could extend, you know, offer an extension in circumstances like that. And then the other side of that, as far as permitting, as far as having that, something like that on your property, I mean, how does the city keep track? If we don't have a permitting?
It would turn into complaint base.
Okay. Because that's the real popular option is wait for the, you read comments all the time, depends on what neighborhood you live in, you know, for your neighbors to be the bad guy or whatever. So permitting takes that responsibility off of the neighbors, you know, kind of abstractly. But if they have a permit and it's got 30 days and it goes beyond, then you guys know about it and then the city can handle that issue?
Yeah, it gets a permit.
But I don't think it's 30 days or more. I don't know that the permit said 30 days or more.
No, it's 30 days max in a 12-month period.
Okay. And so my situation would be is I need to clean out my garage, right? I have stuff in there, but I can't just put it out in the yard because it'll take more than a day or two days to do it. So I would rent a pod, park it in my driveway, clean out the stuff, put the good stuff I want to keep in the pod, put the other stuff in the dumpster or let it be in the dumpster. And that would be less than 30 days, but I would need a permit to do that.
Under current code, yes. You need a permit to do that.
But.
People normally don't use the full 30 days. It's very rare. It's only for like two weeks.
So do you need a permit to do that?
Yes, under current code.
Okay.
But I think the proposal is to remove the permit requirement and just it'd be a complaint based, I think, right?
Yeah. And correct me if I'm wrong. You have, if it becomes a nuisance, if a neighbor's trying to, you know, build a jungle gym out of this or whatever, or if they keep them there for six months, do you have other laws that you could?
Yeah, once it starts to become a permanent situation, and we already have land use and zoning that would cover that, and then our new code would as well, once it becomes a permanent situation, over 90 days.
Yeah. And if I rented a box truck and backed it into my driveway and spent the week loading up my stuff, and then I left out on a Friday, would I have to get a permit for the box truck?
No, not for a box truck.
Well, that's mobile. I mean, you can make that, you could drive it down the neighborhood.
Right. These are mobile, too. You just have to load it.
But they're somewhat stationary for a 30-day, whatever. I just don't understand.
So would this be taking it basically from 30 days to 90 days? Because I heard you just now say 90.
No, I didn't see any changes to that. Right, it's just to remove the permit requirement.
Right. But with the permit gone, then you would have to wait 90 days before you can take action? Is that right?
Unless there's a complaint. There has, when it turns into a complaint-based model, the complaint is what would initiate the time period.
It's of permanent nature over 90 days, though, right?
Yeah, so like if we had, 90 days is like the planning standard for once it becomes no longer a temporary situation, it's a permit situation, and then that's when we would have other permitting requirements that would come into play.
This, the current, so I want to make sure everyone understands. We have an entire section of our city code that deals with these things. Part of it, this part that Mr. Harp wants to, is the permitting that's in subsections H and I, and that would be removed. All the other regulation of pods is still in place in this section. So that has the 30-day limit. It talks about the number you can have. It talks about, in fact, you can't stack them. It talks about various uses, either residential or commercial zones or industrial zones. We require them to be kept in good repair, secured, that we, you cannot use them to live in them or camp or cook or do you use any kind of recreation? All that stays in place. So really, what would happen is you couldn't keep it there for more than 30 days. So if there was no permit, then someone calls and says, hey, somebody's had a pod out here forever. Can you do something? We'll go out there and look at it, unless they have some evidence of when the pod was placed, which they may, they can say, hey, they brought it in on Tuesday the 12th or whatever. That's all evidence, but, you know, I've got to be able to prove it was there for at least 30 days. And so it could be a wait and see and because we have to look and make sure the timeframe is provable. And then once we know it's been there at least 30 days, they could be, they could still be cited for violation, whether or not we require a permit. So this just eliminates the permit part.
Well, I mean, to me, it eliminates kind of accountability, evidence, you know, that kind of thing, however you want to interpret it. But I mean, because without a permit, the city doesn't know when something's placed. It's pretty much just.
It would be kind of a complaint base. So once we get out there and lay eyes on it, unless you say.
And that's my point, is that it's free and it's online. It's not complicated, I'm sure. I mean, it's a pretty user-friendly application.
It's one of our, basically, it's an overcounted permit, over the counter permit. But I did just want to finish answering your question, if that's okay. The 90-day thing, that's just, that's a different, that would trigger different things. What I was going to say is if, for example, if they put a pod out, neighbor calls on day two, we go out there and confirm, 30 days starts then, so maybe they get their pod for 32 days before we require them, if that makes sense. So no, it would not be allowed to stay up to 90 days. That's just other requirements would start coming into play. Sorry, I just wanted to finish.
Also, the city would only know if it was there for the amount of time, if the person moving from out of town knew they were required to get a permit and got a permit. If they didn't get a permit, we still wouldn't know how long it was there. We'd still have to go back, like Mr. Kelly said, and prove.
No problem. I just.
Is there a way that if a newcomer was hypothetically coming, how would they know about our 30-day rule on their first 24 hours in our city without?
I mean, if they do, like due diligence, we get newcomers that call and they say, do I need a permit? That's the most common way.
So the permit is kind of an education process in itself?
Do I need a permit for this? And we explain it to them if they call, if they think to call.
What do other cities do? Do they, a lot of them require a permit?
I've not done a cross-reference on this. I'm not sure. I would speak out of turn. But I can prepare that for the regular meeting if you'd like.
Okay. So.
Thank you, Tim.
Vote on that next week.
So this really takes away the permit requirement for the pods.
It's all of that.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. The next one's an ordinance amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map the rezoned property described in rezoning petition number PZD 2025-58573, county parcel number 16-11099-000, from R3 multifamily residential to PZD planned zoning district. Taylor?
This is a planned zoning district. It's basically a very detailed rezone. So instead of looking at a list of uses before you today, you have a 34-page exhibit that shows the list of uses, the zoning designation, the setback requirements, the lot requirements, as well as what the buildings will look like, the architectural requirements, the placement of the buildings, and then the community facilities that will be placed within the subdivision as well. So basically, one way of looking at it, it is a very detailed rezone that you guys get to see exactly what is going to be built. Rather a traditional rezone, all you get to do is look at the list of uses and that's it. This site is currently zoned as R3 multifamily residential. It's a little over seven and a half acres, which would allow up to 123 units. This PZD is reducing that significantly to only 23 residential, single-family residential uses, and then two community facility buildings to support the residential master plan community within it. It's a community, almost hangout spot, which I'll defer to the applicant to give you more details on that, as well as an office space. And then other than that, it has several amenities, including dog parks, kayak dock, a dog run, and the three park spaces for those that live within this master plan development community. So it's reducing the intensity of the current zone. It's conserving a substantial amount of property within this. It is, Steve, it is next to the lake, so it is providing that conservation on that hillside slope that our community plan likes to see. It is meeting several areas of our comprehensive future land use plan, our policy plan, as well as goals within our future land use plan policies, such as providing more diverse housing. We don't really have housing like this. A lot of our structures are large, you know, your standard family, even though our standard house unit size in Bella Vista is two and a half people. We have very large homes being built right now. We're not getting the diverse type of housing that this is proposing, that is called for as a deep need in our comprehensive plans. It's also calling out preserving and preserving the natural amenity of this area is our comprehensive plan. It's checking several areas of it off. Staff found that it met the PZD, so we recommended approval to planning commission. Planning commission held that public hearing on June 9th. The majority of the public comments received were in favor, and they are recommending approval to you all tonight for this rezone ordinance. And the applicant is here if you have any specific questions about the intent of her development. I'm happy to take any questions about the size one.
The applicant did request that she be able to speak briefly, and she'll answer questions also.
I had one question about minimum square foot. Is that a ACC thing or is that a city? I couldn't find it in the.
Yeah, we, the city does not have minimum square footage requirements. That is through the architectural control committee and the committee. We only oversee max coverage in the city, but with the PZD, she is able to alter the max coverage here into what she wants and what's proposed for you tonight. But again, over four acres of the seven and a half is being conserved as open space, so the max coverage of the traditional census well overmet, so. Unless you guys have any other questions for me?
I don't.
Basically, the PZD district is in negotiated plan development.
And there's a chance for the, yeah, the council to negotiate with the developer should they fit within her development plan.
I believe the only one we have right now is going to be Club Estates.
Yes.
As soon as.
Dogwood, Fort Wayne.
Is this the one, Linda, that you had the, like, little town hall?
Yes.
Because, I mean, the majority of the people that spoke at that, I mean, there wasn't very many people that were, I don't think, I don't, was there anybody opposed to that?
Yes.
A lot? There was just.
Well, I think the neighbors on Fairway Drive, rightfully so, are concerned about construction traffic.
Right.
I totally understand that. I'm going to be living in the middle of it. And if we get trucks that are going too fast or making a mess, I have no, I would be happy to suggest to them that we can get someone different to work on our job some. Because keeping the neighbors happy is very important to me. I scaled this back some because of input. Some of the input that we've gotten is that we should not have, and that was, I think, one of the emails that was in your list, we should not have such a high-density project. Well, if you take the 7.69 acres and divide it by the number of residences, guess what? Comes out to 0.33 of an acre, which I believe is the average-sized lot in Bella Vista. So it's really not a high-density development.
Well, and it hasn't changed a whole lot from what you presented the first time around, has it?
It's just fewer houses.
Yeah, that's, but I mean, as far as the overall, I don't remember what it was the first time.
Right. Well, what we presented last summer was we needed a variance as to the garage setback.
Okay. But I just, I remember it as far as being.
Right. So that, so it has changed. Some Carroll Electric made us change it more because of their unusual requirements. And as far as Travis, you asked about size. What determines size in Bella Vista is the minimum-sized house that's delineated on the subdivision?
Plats.
Plat from Cooper. This will become its own subdivision, so we get to state what the minimums are, and then Cooper and Blue Crane will sign that, and that will establish the minimum-sized house in this subdivision. So that's how that works.
So does Blue Crane or Cooper have an approval on this development yet?
Well, my deed references that if I am to subdivide, Cooper Communities must approve. Because it says Cooper Communities and not the developer, Cooper does have to sign off before I started any of this. The two people I met with were Chief Sims and Cooper, because they were the most important folks before I got started. Cooper was very much in favor of it, even if they loved it. They loved the concept. So they will have to sign off, and through the ACC process, I believe Blue Crane will sign off on the ACC portion of it. And I do have a letter from the ACC that they viewed the request for a new subdivision with contemporary-style houses, the committee has approved the concept of the subdivision of contemporary-style homes. So I already have that from the ACC. Met with them a month or so ago.
Do you have a waiting list for these yet? They seem to be pretty popular with the 55 and plus community. It's an innovative thing, too, and I think it's very neat that you're trying to bring that here, by the way.
Well, the important part about cohousing is people can have smaller houses because the common house, which is my current house, will have bedroom suites. So if Aunt Sally comes to visit, you don't have to have an extra bedroom for her. She can walk down the street and stay in the common house. You don't have to have a big garage to put a bunch of tools in that you use once a year because the common house will have a tool-endning library. So if you need a ladder or a drill or whatever, you walk over to the common house, just like you're getting a book out of a library, sign it out, use it, and bring it back. So then you can have a much smaller house. There'll also be a bike workshop, a dog washing station, a place where your bridge group can meet, where you can have a family reunion. That's the whole reason that cohousing is a more social atmosphere and people can have smaller houses. They'll also be extremely energy-efficient, use healthy building materials, so they'll be very easy for people to maintain from a cost-effective standpoint.
I like it. I think it's interesting.
And one of the proponents of the 2040 plan was a variety of housing needed to be developed in Bella Vista to accommodate the growth.
Right, right.
So this satisfies that.
Yes, and Travis, you asked, I've done no advertising. I've got 22 people already on a waiting list with no advertising.
Wow.
So I'm happy to answer any other questions. I also have two cohousing books. If anybody wanted to borrow them until next week, you're welcome to do so.
The other thing that I read that your neighbors may have been concerned about is people speeding up and down the road once you get it filled up, but it's a 55 and plus community and they tend to be better drivers than teenagers.
Well, some of this old boat still speeds. But I know they're worried about traffic on the street. But most of these houses will have, probably have one person or two. No kids. They probably, a lot of us won't go, won't have to go to work. We don't have to take kids to basketball games and all that kind of thing. So I think the number of trips certainly would be far less than if somebody put 100 rental townhouses on this property, which as Taylor mentioned, you can with the R37.
Your forward-facing structures near the street will also help slow speeds as well. You're zero-foot setting.
Yeah, the closer houses are to the street, it slows people down. Okay. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is a resolution establishing a code of conduct for the Bella Vista City Council. And this was suggested to me by some employees at Bella Vista, and the Arkansas Municipal League had a model code of conduct from several years ago. So we took that, we made it shorter, I'd say simplified it a bit, and made it read a little bit better. So that's where it came from, anyway. Pretty much consistent with their concept.
I guess my only objection would be is way down under the council member's second bullet from the bottom on the first page, it says, we'll inform the mayor and city clerk if plans to be absent, I would say, whenever possible, because there are times that you may be sick and you may not be able to call. I had a meeting, work session, that I couldn't make because couldn't get a hold of it, so.
Yeah.
My system didn't work.
Let's see.
I mean, I think there's an argument that that's not a plan to be absent. That's an absence, but it wasn't a plan to be absent.
No, it wasn't a plan.
Yeah, I mean, it just.
I see what you mean, plans, I know.
I know I'm going to be on vacation next month as a plan.
Your car breaks down.
My car broke down on the way to the meeting. I wasn't planning on, you know, it's a way. But it can read however you all wanted to read.
So far, council's been pretty good that way as far as saying something when they can't make.
Oh, I think it's great.
This seems like a resolution that was probably needed for the last set of council members, in my opinion.
Yeah, we had, sometimes when things got a little heated.
But I can't, I can't disagree with anything in here necessarily, other than, you know, I've got a couple of phone calls after meetings, and I feel like maybe this was aimed at me and certainly don't want to violate any of these. I don't know if anyone else gets phone calls after the meeting by the mayor, but.
Well, I mean, just the instruction by staff is carried out by your director.
The mayor's in charge.
Yeah. So I mean, there's not an individual that works at the city with a plot to do their own thing. I mean, so it's a collective of us, the mayor, and that's about it, anyway.
I did notice they had a couple of things they told the mayor not to do in here that never even occurred to me, to adjourn meetings, to avoid a vote you don't like. Apparently I'm not diabolical enough, but.
A lot of things have happened in the state over time.
Yeah, probably they got these ideas from other cities, right? So, okay. Anyway, we can vote on that next week. The next one's a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a guaranteed maximum price contract amendment with the Kleiner Construction Management Inc. in the additional amount of blank. And I have something to pass out here. For purposes of renovation, remodeling, and fire station, number one, we were, I apologize. We were, just got this, we were working on the numbers today to make sure we had them right. Pretty much had them last week, but we wanted to make sure we had them just right. So I will mention one thing.
You have one for the clerk?
Yes, Mark Kleiner, and the fire chief will speak about that, but here you want one.
So this is a blank check?
No. The amount that goes in there and the amount we're asking for approval of is $3,776,771.53. And that's for Phase 3 and 4C. But these, the reason we put all these numbers on is because the legal contract. So far, council's been pretty good that way as far as saying something when they can't make.
Oh, I think it's great.
This, this seems like a, a resolution that was probably needed for the last set of council members, in my, in my opinion.
Yeah, we did sometimes when things got a little heated.
But I can't, I can't disagree with anything in here necessarily. Other than, you know, I've got a couple of phone calls after meetings. And I feel like maybe this was aimed at me and certainly don't want to violate any of these. I don't know if anyone else gets phone calls after the meeting by the mayor, but.
Well, I mean, just the instruction by staff is carried out by your directive.
The mayor's in charge.
Yeah, so I mean, there, there's not an individual that works at the city with a plot to do their own thing. I mean, so it's a collective of us, the mayor, and that's about it. Anyway.
I did notice they had a couple of things they told the mayor not to do in here that never even occurred to me, to adjourn meetings, to avoid a vote you don't like. Apparently I'm not diabolical enough, but you know.
A lot of things have happened in the state over, over time.
Yeah, probably they got these ideas from other cities, right? So, okay. Anyway, we can vote on that next week. The next one's a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a guaranteed maximum price contract amendment with the Kleiner Construction Management Inc. in the additional amount of blank. And I have something to pass out here. For purposes of renovation, remodeling of fire station number one. We were, I apologize. We were, just got this, we were working on the numbers today and making sure we had them right. Pretty much had them last week, but we wanted to make sure we had them just right. So I will mention one thing.
You have one for the clerk?
Yes, Mark Kleiner and the fire chief will speak about this, but here you want one.
So this is a blank check?
Uh, no. The amount that goes in there and the amount we're asking for approval of is And that's for phase three and four C. But these, the reason we put all these numbers on is cause the legal contract includes everything we already approved in the past, which adds up to six point, the 6.3 million. That's what you already approved. And the 460, then we subtracted 460,000 from that because we are coming out better than the guaranteed maximum price. And, and then this is the approval that's being requested. So I'll have Steve Sims and Mark Kleiner come up and explain a little more about the project to you.
So in summary, Mr. Mayor, the cost on this project is 9.691 million. Correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Everything that's been done plus.
Everything's been done up until now.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
So of course you see the sheet here you just got handed out to you there that shows us starting out from the beginning when we renovated the fire station, the old two story PD building into a fire living and day use area. And then we had the phase one and two site work. You can see those, all those together there matched up to the First and Second Amendment guarantee maximum price that we're finishing now. The portion we're finishing now is what we're looking at here. And I think y'all got a, y'all got a copy of that? Yeah, you have a copy of that as well. I just want to kind of lay out what we're finishing with this is the area behind this area. And this is a new portion that's sticking out currently right now. It's going to be city hall and fire management on top. That's the 6.3 million, 6.374 million dollars that you're, that's already been approved by the council. What we're looking at is carrying on with phase three, which is a renovation of the old city hall area right here, the old city hall right here. And renovation of, of this space right here. So we're doing all of this square footage right here with that amount. And just keep in mind, it's not the bill, it's not the cost of the building. In that 3.7 million dollars, you also have architectural fees and our construction management fees as well in there. Not just with the cost of the building, renovating this space here and completely renovating city hall and putting a new roof on it. Next, I gotta take that roof off and put a new roof on it all the way over to here. Will be a new roof, so all the way over to here will be a new roof for that, that particular pricing on that.
So Chief Sims, the, the two fire stalls that are tallest there.
These right here.
That's where the existing building is now, where the bedrooms are and your office is temporarily on.
Well, no, right here, right here is, yes, where that's going to be at is where we currently are right now. And that's where planning is currently.
Correct, correct.
With some building and the fire department currently right now.
And so this will be phased so that the part on the right side effectively gets done so they can relocate and then you'll do that fire stall.
That's, that's correct.
Is that right?
If it's approved by council. So that's additional. And you see that additional amount as you carry that on that route. Currently right now, it moves that GMP up to 9691331 currently, what you see on your sheet right there. That gets that to this renovation of these three bays and complete renovation to a brand new building of where planning would be at, planning department would be.
So it's a remodel of the current administrative office there?
That's correct, to a new building. I mean, there's a lot to that. Larry, they gotta, they gotta completely remove the roof and put a new structure on that roof, roof line. That's why to tie everything together here.
So the structure itself, the four walls will remain?
All that will remain. They'll just be getting it out and redoing it basically anew. And of course plumbing's gotta be, that's an old building. It's built in seven, between 72 and 76. Built in 72 and added on in 76. So we're dealing with some old infrastructure there as well. So.
Is the cost per square foot in here? It's probably in this.
It's, um. If you add it up on there, we're around $400 a square foot on a total, on all the projects, roughly. Maybe a little less.
The plan was always four phases, is that right?
That's correct. In the four, in the fourth phase, and I want to, I want to remind everybody not only is it the engine bay, square footage, we're also adding a two story. There's a mezzanine with the two story conditioned space that also has office space and physical fitness room and some other things, like a place where we keep our drugs in that heated space that's above the mezzanine on, on the fourth phase.
So where, show us on there where that is.
So it's going to be on this, it's going to be this space here. And it'll go back.
So where's, where's the line for the new fire offices and administration going to be?
Right here. Fire, fire administration is right here.
Second floor.
Second floor of this new portion.
Yeah, the city hall's on first floor and the fire offices are on the second floor.
That's currently, it's.
And the new part.
And it's about finished now. And that's where we've, we've figured out, we've realized we've got a cost saving. Not, not only is it going to cost 63 or 64, if you want to round it off, it's going to be around under $6 million to complete that, that project. If anybody hasn't been there, come by and see it.
Could you explain one thing? Just, I just want to make sure it's clear to them. This, this, this is for phase three and four C.
That's correct.
What is four A and B and what, what is not in the ask for this?
Okay, so that, so four A and B is going to be the, is going to be the new engine bays, the two engine bays here. I think it's around 4,200 square foot, 4,400 square foot on the engine bays with another 1,800 square foot on top of that second story where we'll have office, office space and.
But that part's not the.
That's not in here.
That's not in this.
So that's, that's over and above the 9.6 billion?
That's in the phase four estimate.
That's, that's right, so.
We'd been better off bulldozing that whole site and starting from scratch.
Fourth phase.
If I can respond to that, that's a valid point. But working through this project with planning and our civil engineering partners and the architect, we would have been substantially reduced in the amount of square footage that we would have been able to build because of, everything would have come up to current code setbacks, coverage requirements and all of that would have, would have been lucky to build just the fire station.
I think that was addressed the first time we came around with this.
It was. I mean, if we, if you want to step back to some history on this, folks, that was going to be central fire station. That whole complex was. It started out originally that way. And then it started growing a little bit because of the needs of the city. What the city's future was and what the city was looking forward and seeing what we could do as far as getting staff in one location. That's how, and then the architects had to go around and try to figure out the best way to do that. So that's how, that's how it kind of ended up in that, in that direction. So it's your own property, that was the thing. It had to buy land or property. And you'd have to renovate that property anyhow, whether it be cheaper or not. We have something that's going to be there 50 plus, 50 plus years. It's going to be the city's owned by the city and paid for by the city taxpayers.
And something we battled all the way through is working around the departments. You've got everybody there now, right?
Everybody, everybody right now other than PD and streets?
So we're moving them around like pieces of a little puzzles we must play.
Yes, we've been open the whole time, basically in the same building.
Yeah. I think with CDS moving in, that kind of complicated matters. That's part of the reason why we ended up having to do a fourth phase, which extended the time and probably the cost was a lot, but.
Do we know how many people will work out of there on a regular basis, like Monday through Friday?
So.
I'm just curious.
I think Taylor, you have 11, 12, 12 on yours?
Yeah, I've got 12 with that.
We're about six that I'm working on the fire, well, other than the two story portion. Are you talking about the fire?
No, just the entire complex.
Including the fire station as well? There's, I'd say about, if you're, if you're counting firefighters, six, six people at station one. Fire crew, Taylor's 12, SSS has 12, 18. Marion and him have, what, about six in the office?
I have 10.
24. And then five or six staff. So about 30, 31 or so. Until we switch out shifts and then I got another six people coming in, so. And so far, that's, that's working out.
How does this cost falling into just the original project estimates?
For the original, we, I mean, in our, in mind, kind of looking out, out, looking like that. I think at one time, I think the architect priced it around 10 million, but I think that was before some of the phases come into play. It was kind of talked about. But it, I mean, it's kind of expected, especially with, especially when we got the first guaranteed maximum price. And then, actually, that was a pretty good price for that renovation of the.
I can give you this information that I got from the architect last Thursday when I talked with him. I invited him to come up if he wanted to. But I was asking him what his current central fire stations are typically costing. They do more fire stations than anybody in Arkansas, probably anybody in the nation. So they see these costs regularly. He said today, a project like what we're building would probably be in the $600 square foot range, maybe even greater. Part of that depends upon whether it's all one floor or multi-story like we've got, which does add some expense.
Well, with the way material cost is rising, are you guys able to secure material now? Before we get into the final phase?
Everything through phase two has been secured. We have firm pricing on phase three and four C. As soon as I, if you guys approve this, I'll be getting contracts issued which lock center price.
Okay.
For three. Four, we, that estimate includes some inflationary, if you will. I don't know, I mean.
Well, I know the price of aluminum.
The day after I gave him that proposal, we had a little event in the Mideast which got everybody all stirred up.
Aluminum steel is through the roof. That's why I was asking.
All metals are, have probably doubled in the last.
I can attest.
If I could just kind of remind the council, we're, we're procuring this building through an alternative process which allows us to use a construction manager for projects that are over $2 million. And so it's important to point out, it's a guaranteed maximum price. So you need to be prepared to actually put, I mean, that, that's what it could be. It could also be less than that. And we've had phases of this project that came in less than what the maximum price was. So what you're getting is the worst case scenario for the city in terms of cost. It's not going to come in, you know, a million less than what, what's anticipated, but there could be some savings in the project. I'll let Steve talk about that.
That, you know, $5.9 million is, is renovated, just under 14,000 square feet, folks. That's a lot of, that's a lot of space for 5.9 million.
I can also tell you that kind of value added to what you're saying is most generally every other construction management contract that's done typically, not us, but other construction managers, they don't include what they call FF, and it furniture fixtures and equipment. They don't include the architectural fees in those, in those square foot numbers. This is all in. We're down, we, we put it all in to even provide things like their bunker gear, lockers and SCBA equipment, air compressors. I mean, it's ready to go. All they gotta do is move in and start using it, with the exception of their rolling stock. So there is some value added into this that's, and we've got in this CDS, it's going to be CDS, a little over $100,000 just for furniture and, and some equipment that they're going to purchase. So that, that's not something that's typically included if you're trying to compare the cost per square foot. I could defend those all day long, but we prefer it that way because I think even in your own public safety project, there were probably some things that weren't initially included that, you know, had to, the city had to come out of pocket for. We tried to do all of that included and not have to go back. And in fact, are coming in under our expected price of places wanting to.
Shay?
Yeah, I think I know the answer, but can we just talk about how this, how this project originally initiated? If it had voter input and, and like, is this related to a bond or sales tax?
So voter input, no. Related to a bond, yes. Currently right now, the, the renovation and the new two story portion is currently under revenue bond, franchise fee revenue bond, up to 5.3 million.
5.4, yeah.
Million dollars.
Yeah, and we did that. We, it closed last November.
That was last November. Yeah, so we started applying things to the bond at that time.
But our 1% bond that people actually voted on was for the public safety building and fire station number three, the redo on Glasgow and the fire training, those three things. It was something like 23 and a half million, something in that range.
And once we pay that off, we can send it to the voters to have a renewal?
Yeah, yeah. We're actually, next month, we were going to talk about financing concepts. And we needed to get this going in June because we didn't want that, if the construction people leave, then it costs more. You know, they're on site and we want them to stay on site if we could.
And I do have currently right now in my 24 budget, capital budget, and in 25, I have funding about a million and two, million and two to carry on the project. I just wasn't for sure in the 24 budget exactly where we're going to be at in the new phase, news phase being completed and when we're going to be moving in. So I kind of guesstimated, after visiting with Ken, we kind of guesstimated on about 600,000. I wasn't quite for sure, but I put that in both budget cycles just to be on the safe side until we could figure out the GMP. So I did put some funding in there to carry on the project for a while until we could see other clients.
So phase four, that's on here for 3.27 million. When will that occur?
So we're thinking about, did you say eight or nine months possibly for a phase?
Well, we've got, presuming that we would start immediately when the mayor and staff, city staff move into their new pit, uh, space, we would start demolition. And we're figuring that it's probably nine to 10 months.
Yeah, he's talking the next phase after that.
Oh, beyond that, folks. I'm sorry, phase four.
The one that would start from 18 months.
Phase four would, would start in June or July of '26 and be done probably in early '27.
Cause planning and development has to have their new place ready.
Yeah, we'll have to move them in and then start that renovation.
When CDS moves out of the current old living quarters, dining room area in the old fire station, they'll move into the new renovated, what's now current city hall. And so because four A is a complete demolition. We take out everything from the old police, two story police buildings now, current living quarters all the way over to the apparatus base of current, the original.
So in, in four C, you're talking about the three low bays for fire.
Yeah, the existing.
And the current city hall administrative area that will be remodeled.
That's correct.
That's, that's phase three and four C.
That allows the fire department to continue to function out of the old three bay area until the new one is ready. We're going to renovate four C while they're using it.
That's why we're kind of doing.
It's basically a renovation with the roof line and all that kind of stuff, right?
That, and also we're, it's basically taking that, that structure. There's a lot of things we got to do in that structure. It's an old structure, 55 years old. Actually a little longer than that, but we got to take, we got to do some ceiling. We got to put a ceiling lid in there, some other things. Insulation's already good in there. I think there's some things we're going to use that's in there, but we also have to put a ceiling in there to make it a little bit more modern. New engine bay doors, those doors were old, they're falling apart. I mean, you can see that, they look down and shut right. So that, we're, we're going to use some of the.
Also get the new exterior machinery that matches everything that the roof line would match and tie into everything. And it's also going to be fire sprinkler, which it's not now. So, and it's all tied into, we'll have new electrical throughout, new plumbing. And it'll tie into the new switchgear and generator so that it's, it's kind of a cobbled mess right now with the little, little generator that supplies a little bit of power and sometimes starts and sometimes it doesn't.
So four three, four C is the three bay fire and remodeling of the existing administrative building.
Right, yeah.
Is that right?
Yes, of the city, yeah, where the city hall is at now. That's, that's phase three. Four C is the engine bays, the old engine bays.
Oh.
Phase three is, is where city hall is now. And then four C is the three engine bays, the whole, that's what, 3,000, a little over 3,000 square foot area right there. It's going to be renovated. the whole, that's what, 3,000, 11, 3,000 square foot area right there, it's going to be renovated with the new roof line.
And when we're done with that, it'll look right and it'll match everything else.
That's, folks, that building's going to carry us out for 50-plus years on the fireside. Well, I proved that, we've been in that building for 55 years, so, that's the Fire Department.
You know, one thing I've found out since I was mayor, which I never really thought about before, is your facilities have something to do with recruiting people. You know, when we got the new police, and every time we get something new for the Fire Department, it really helps with getting new employees, so.
It does, it does help.
I can tell you, because we've built a lot of other fire stations and worked with other fire chiefs, they just sit around and just do this when chief gets somebody trained, and they go pick them off and hire them for 10 or 15% more money. So he, he's trained a lot of firefighters that are now working on, I hate to say that, but it's true, to your point. I'll bet you that is not happening once we get this new facility.
Well, that's kind of slowed down too, yeah.
And hopefully that extends over to the city staff as well, inspectors and planners. I know Kat, I know Cassidy's happy.
Even Walmart's getting new offices every 50 years.
I've got to pick up my pajamas, right?
Thanks, Chief.
Any more questions? Okay. On this, we didn't have anything listed for discussion, but one thing I wanted to mention is, because some of the people on council brought up about hiring more fire, fire personnel, and we are applying for a safer grant for six firefighters, and it's due in July, and there's, the way it works is the first year, they pay two-thirds of it, the grant does. Second year, they pay two-thirds, and then the third year, they pay one-third. We got one a number of years ago for 12 firefighters when we were starting fire station number four.
That was in '16 we got that grant.
Yeah, and we've tried for some, you don't always get them. We've tried for some since then, like, for a while they had them, so it paid all of it for several years, and we, they're pretty popular, so they're a little hard to get. But anyway, I want to let you know, we're at least giving it a shot.
Awesome, thanks, Mayor.
Who, uh, where's that grant from?
So it's a, it's a safer grant, it's from FEMA.
Okay.
So it's FEMA.
Will that continue?
I just got a, a good question. I think so. I think if they award that, it will, it will continue on, so.
Most of the fire-related stuff that I've seen is starting to come back online now.
Yeah.
Yeah, they just sent us some info about it recently, and it said, Chief, it says there was two or three different categories, is this something we should be going for, so.
Is there any, like, legal or ethical advocacy we could do around that, like, call a senator or anything like that to try to-
Would that help, Steve?
I mean, well, I mean, we can do-
You all can talk to whomever you want, whatever you want to.
Citizens, people, anybody, you know, like-
People always contact their senator or congressman.
And we've done that in the past, Bozeman, Wong Mac, we've always got letters of support through them in the past, so.
Are you familiar with Kyle Weaver?
Kyle Weaver, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So I have reached out to a great writer that's going to help us with, that's going to help with some of that that has been successful in these safer grants, so.
She's excited.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have one thing to add if the council doesn't mind, if you don't mind.
Oh, sure.
Is there any way, I've tried to do it by myself, and I, there's just, it's just impossible for them to reach out to me, but I had a little bit of concern on how, how busy the new bike park's going to be and the services, you know, police, fire, EMS, and the, the increased demand that we'll have on that. Is there any way that we could maybe get an estimate from, from that group on their, you know, monthly visitors? Because I, I was doing some research online and like similar things in Colorado, like 20,000 people a month, they're going to that. And so I just had some concerns about, you know, the increased demand for services, and have, have we heard, do we have a way? I wouldn't know how to go about doing it, because I've tried and they won't talk to me, so.
Oh, well, yeah, we can try to check into it. Taylor, you had some kind of a ballpark estimate per month, where did that come from?
Uh, I mean, I just did a parking, what they, the max capacity of their parking lot can do, and two full weekends, because sizes and more, a weekend heavy, their generation trips, and then multiply that times 52 weeks a year. And that was, if they had full capacity on Saturday and Sunday, and their parking lot fits 200 to 250 people, 250 max, times two, 500 people a weekend, or 500 visitors at one point at their greatest peak hour, then that would be 26,000 visitors in a year, not including the stragglers of the week that take off vacation and come and whatnot, but that's just a very ballpark image of max capacity possibilities during the weekends of their busiest time.
I don't think anybody was at the planning meeting, council member, I was there because I brought these various issues up. I was terrified about the traffic.
Mm-hmm.
Because you're going to have riders riding on the streets to access, not just trucks.
As well as vehicles, as well as vehicles. So what's the parking capacity they're putting in? Vehicle parking?
Far as my thunder to 250.
250?
But their peak generation, their traffic study did not project a full parking lot.
250 cars, so two riders per car on probably average?
Well, that's just, that's supposing two people per car.
Right.
I mean, you could have a truck, a van-
Right.
-full of 10 riders with a full rack of bikes on it.
And I see that driving around.
So, I mean, I'm just-
They, they anticipated, if I remember right, that people would ride bikes to it, so they'd come up the greenway, they wouldn't be in a car, they would also, but those are people there that wouldn't necessarily be in a car, so.
The park itself isn't that big though compared to like the Colorado parks, I will say, like the number of trails and miles of trails might be something to kind of look at too when you do analysis, because the, the parks in Colorado are, are pretty big, and this one doesn't have that many trails.
And I don't want to drag this out.
A lot higher for one thing.
Yeah, yeah, they're a bigger, yeah.
But that's, i- is there any point when this thing, I mean, I know that there, it's under construction, but that was a concern that I have, is so, such a burden that's going to be put on that intersection. And I mean, are, are we going to have any, anything after the fact? Because that's, you know, just like the bike lane that goes down, I don't know how emergency services are going to get down when it's 50 cars deep, you know, and the, the pylons are up on the emergency lane, et cetera. So I mean, there's a lot of things to consider on the northbound lane. You've got somebody in an ambulance, and you've got cars piled all the way down, where are they going to get them?
I think the traffic study addressed that, but we didn't-
Yeah, I mean, I-
-get with that. Their, their chip generation, their traffic study was not near the full capacity on that.
Okay.
I remember the traffic study, I apologize for that.
No, but I think we need to, we need to talk about all that stuff.
Yeah, I did, I had asked the group in charge of that, when they had their open house, if they would have their own, you know, paramedics or anything like that, like their own full-time staff, kind of like a ski resort has like ski patrol.
Right.
And they'll have kind of volunteer coverage, similar to what we have in the city trails, but they, they're not going to have like a full-time paid staff, and their plan for any medical emergency would be 911, so really glad to hear about the six-person grant that we're applying for, and I think we should collectively, you know, ourselves and encourage the community to engage in advocacy around, try and get that approved.
The downside of that, however, is that after the three years, after the three years, our obligation, Chief?
It's on us, yeah.
After three years, our obligations pick up 100% of those six hours, and so we need to make sure that we have-
Sure, yeah.
-half a million dollars in the pocket to be able to do that, so we need to get some sales tax revenue off of this new bike park.
And we're paying a ton of overtime right now too each year, so that was alleviated, and there's kind of a give and take there as well. That would help.
That's all I have, thanks.
Okay, thanks for bringing that up, we'll see if we can get something more definitive. Anything else? Okay, I guess we're adjourned then, and we'll meet next week at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Is there anything on the construction agenda?